It's still as bad as well.
It's doing that, so anyway, that's I just just came and got back.
That's right.
Hey, thanks.
We'd like to call this evening's meeting of the Peoria City Council to order and welcome Kathy Reinerson and her listening audience at WCBU as well as Cable Channel 22. Madam Clerk, the council microphones are open for roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Ali, Councilmember Seer, Councilmember Grab, Councilmember Jensen, Councilmember Kelly, Councilmember Montalongo, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Euler, Councilmember Rigenbach, and Councilmember Ruck Regal. You have a quorum present, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'd like to invite everyone to join us and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a couple of proclamations this evening, and we're going to start first with the Founder's Day for Jack and Jill of America. If they want to join me up here in the front.
Whereas, the Jack and Jill of America was founded in 1938 in the nation's oldest African-American family organization dedicated to the elevation and raising of positive, successful, community-minded African-American children. And whereas now, in its 82nd year, this mother-run organization continues to focus on nurturing future African-American leaders by stimulating the development of children through educational, cultural, civic, recreational, health, and social programs. And whereas, through its nearly 250 chapters across the United States, the organization consists of over 40,000 family members, including mothers, fathers, and children ages 2 through 19. And whereas, in November of 2019, the Peoria, the Greater Peoria, Illinois Chapter of Jack and Jill celebrated its five-year anniversary. In this time, the Greater Peoria Chapter has planned, participated in, and promoted countless programs and activities for its children, including hosting the 66th Annual Teen Leadership Conference in Peoria, which welcomed nearly 300 Jack and Jill teens, parents, and chaperones to the area. And whereas, GPI is determined to continue to lead its children and their mothers in programmatic and community service initiatives that build the GPI's commitment to enrich the lives of our children in ways that elevate the whole child and community. And whereas, on January 24, 2020, Jack and Jill of America celebrated Founder's Day, which recognized the history of the organization and all the lives and communities positively impacted by their mission. Now therefore, I, Jamar Dismayr, of the City of Peoria, Illinois, do hereby recognize Founder's Day for Jack and Jill of America in Peoria on this 28th day of January 2020 A.D. So Mimi Volmar is here with me, the chapter president, and I was just telling Mimi that we had a few minutes before the meeting to meet downstairs in the office, and I had a really good opportunity to meet with these future leaders behind me, hear a little bit about their interests. They presented us with a nice token of appreciation for the proclamation that we'll proudly display down in the mayor and council office. But I told her it was really nice to have that conversation and then come into a council meeting and feel like energized and ready to go, as opposed to maybe some other times when it's not quite so jovial. But the, this group is a very impressive group of young leaders. We're proud of them and their accomplishments. We seriously continue to encourage their participation in the community, their willingness to be leaders in the community, be that the voice, especially those young voices which we desperately need. So I just want to thank Mimi and the rest of the group for coming in this evening. You know that being a mother's run organization that gets run right, and everybody's on time and does what they're supposed to do, but thank you very much for, for bringing the students in. And the microphone is yours, Mimi. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor Artis. Thank you very, very much. I just very briefly want to thank Mayor Artis, the council members for welcoming, welcoming us this evening and helping us to celebrate the Founder's Day. These are the mothers and children and fathers of the Greater Peoria of Illinois Chapter, and we are very blessed. We consider ourselves very blessed to be able to be raising our children in the cradle that is Peoria. The work that we do in Jack and Jill is some of the most important work that gets done, the raising of our children, and we're fortunate to have a community while not without the normal things you find in a community, to be a loving, nurturing, warm place in which to cultivate these young leaders, and we're grateful for it. So thank you again for welcoming us and celebrating our special day with us. Thank you very much.
I move to approve the minutes of the joint city council and town board meeting held on January 14, 2020 as printed.
Thank you, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Are there any corrections or changes to the minutes? Seeing no lights, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
We're at the consent agenda. 20-018 is a request to accept a dedication deed from the Thousand Oaks Extended Homeowners Association for portions of West Thousand Oaks Drive, North Laurel Wood Court, and North Wood Acre Court. 20-0119 is a request to approve the purchase of real estate located at 1519 Southwestern Avenue in an, in an amount not to exceed $25,000 plus other expenditures estimated at $12,500 as an opportunity acquisition for the improvement of Western Avenue from Adams Street to Howett Street. 20-20 is a request to approve the low bid from Conica Minolta for the purchase of two copiers at $10,633 each for a total cost of $21,267. 20-021 is a request to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a contract for the third-party administration of the City of Peoria's foreclosure registry with ProChamps. 20-022 is a request to approve an agreement with Granicus Incorporated to provide a council agenda and meeting software in the amount of $31,351 for 2020, $33,545 for 2021, and $35,894 for 2022. 20-023 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 9.5 of the Code of the City of Peoria regarding storm water volume control, and there is a handout with, an ordinance with revised title that's on yellow on your desk. 20-017 is a request to adopt an ordinance amending Article 4 of the Code of the City of Peoria relating to animals. And 20-024 is a request to approve the site application for a Class B restaurant 50% food liquor license with onsite consumption and retail sale of alcohol at Black Ben LLC DBA Black Ben Distillery, 1000 Southwest Adams contingent upon issuance of all appropriate permits and a certificate of occupancy with a recommendation from the Liquor Commission to approve in that complete your consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we do consent, I neglected to read our second proclamation this evening to the library, so we're going to take a half a step back, and I'm going to ask Jenny Stevens from the library to join me at the center podium with my apologies.
Whereas, the Peoria Public Library and various community partners have worked together since 2001 to present Peoria Reads, a one-city, one-block annual initiative that promotes community participation in reading. And whereas, Peoria Reads encourages Peorians to read the same significant book at the same time in order to bring our diverse community together to promote a better understanding of ourselves and our own humanity. And whereas, participating in Peoria Reads will encourage reading, will increase opportunities for discussion between, between people of all ages, and will deepen readers' appreciation for books dealing with important issues. And whereas, The Hate U Give by Angie Thomas has been chosen as the 2020 Peoria Reads selection. Now therefore, I, Jamar Dismayr, of the City of Peoria, do hereby recognize and proclaim spring 2020 as the season of Peoria Reads in Peoria, Illinois.
Jenny Stevens from the Peoria Public Library will give us a little more information.
Thank you, Mayor Artis. Thank you, council members. Thank you for helping us officially launch Peoria Reads 2020 with, as the mayor said, our selection this year is The Hate U Give by Angie Thomas. And as a one-book-one-city initiative, we, as a Peoria Reads committee, choose books that will spur conversation and introspection. And I'm joined by one of our partners from Methodist College, and she's going to speak in a moment, but we have other partners in Bradley University and Neighborhood House, and we have between, amongst all of us, scheduled more than a dozen events that we hope the community will be involved in after you read this really award-winning, thought-provoking book. It is one that does delve into some dark themes, including racism and police brutality, but it also delves into the healing and grace that can come as a result of violence. So we know this is going to be a, a book that really lets us take a good look at ourselves as a community, and we're really excited to share it with you. We invite you, the Peoria Public Library invites you, to check out The Hate U Give at any of our five locations or download it digitally, and check out peoriareads.com for the listing of events. Now I'm going to let Colleen mention a couple of our really big events.
Hi, I'm Colleen Karn. I teach English and Humanities at Methodist College, and we're really happy that this is our third year partnering with Peoria Reads. We have our own Methodist College Reads that is a partner program. We adopt the same book for the entire academic year that Peoria Reads has for their spring. And this year, two of our big events, one of them is going to be, they're both titled The Help U Give, because we wanted to focus on the community coming together. And so one of them is The Help U Give, and it's a symposium. It's called Becoming a Change Agent, and that is going to be hosted at Methodist College. And the focus of the symposium is awareness and advocacy. Our goal is to educate participants about underserved and underrepresented populations in our community and inspire participants to become community change agents. One of the other large events that we'll be doing is hosted by Peoria Reads, and it is also called The Help U Give, and it's going to be a community conversation. This is going to be on Saturday, April 4, from 2 to 4. I really encourage everybody to come, actually to both of these. But this one is going to be a conversation between community organizations and leaders of the underrepresented and underserved populations in our community about how we can work together to make our community more equitable, inclusive, and safe. And so I encourage you to come to these. I encourage you to come to the book discussions, the movie discussions, all of the many wonderful events that we have planned this spring. Thank you.
Sorry about that. So are there any items to remove from consent this evening? Councilman Kelly.
Yes, 20, 20-022, please.
022, okay. Any other items to remove from consent? I'm seeing no lights. I have a motion to approve the remaining items. Councilman Rigenbach seconded, Councilman Seer. Please cast your ballots. And that motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
20-22 is the agreement with Granicus for the council agenda and meeting software.
Councilman Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do use and I very much like the software, the Granicus software, and hope we can continue to use it. However, we need to watch the taxpayers' dollars around here, even for smaller amounts. This, these increases are each 7% per year, which seems a little excessive to me in that inflation doesn't come anywhere near that, and we are, and our own revenues don't come close to that kind of growth either. I did have a discussion with our city manager, asking him if he could go back to Granicus and ask them for a, an explanation and also to see if we could get a cut in these increases. It seems a little odd to me that, well, anyway. So I would like to move for a deferral of this item until our next meeting.
Yes, I have made a request to, to see if they would be willing to reduce the price. We can't operate without the Granicus system. I would ask that you approve this subject to the, the prices that are here. If the price comes in lower, we'll be able to reduce that contract price. I have made that request. It's just we, this expired December 31 of, of 2019 with some of the changes in IS. It just arose to, to the clerk's desk and our desk in order to act on this contract. I would just ask if we would go forward with this, knowing that we do have a request in to lower the price down. We can't operate without this system. This is what you see that's here in front of the, the system that we're using here tonight to live broadcast the meetings, to stream live, and to also manage our agenda system. So without it, we're back to paper.
I don't, I know that all the things that the manager has said are absolutely correct. As a matter of fact, as I said, I very much like the system, and I use the system. I think, however, with these kinds of increases, I think we need an explanation, and I feel that they have us over a barrel. I don't know what else is going up at 7% a year that we're aware of. So I will accede to the manager's request and move for approval of this item, but I would ask the manager to report back to us at our next meeting as to your conversation.
If it's sooner, I'll, I'll definitely let you know. If I get an answer from them, it's an affirmative that they're able to lower the price.
Thank you.
Councilman Grab.
Mr. Manager, did you say paper?
I did say paper, yes.
In other words, you wouldn't have these little screens that most of us don't even bring in here to follow the meeting with, would initiate that as well?
No, we would, we, you would still have, we would, yes, we could do it with paper, but the, part of the reason that we have this system is to be able to share that information with the public electronically, and it is incredibly data-intensive for the clerk's office. This system is incredibly valuable for our, how we manage the paper flow within the organization. So.
How did we manage to do it before Granicus?
Well, we, we had prior record-keeping systems that we utilized. When I first arrived here just nine years ago, staff were putting together agenda items using a large accordion file and filing paper and, and putting it together. So it was very labor-intensive.
Well, I certainly want to support Councilman Kelly, the spirit with which he brings his comments, and I guess to do otherwise in terms of this technology would to, would cause me to be labeled a Luddite, wanting to go back to caveman era. But yeah, I think that, you know, Councilman Kelly is correct about the, the increase, and if we can bring that down, we should. Thank you.
Is that a second for the most?
A second, yes.
Second. Further discussion, Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you. Have a, just a couple of questions or, and/or comments to make for the city manager. I know this is a significant purchase for us, and I know, I mean, I think there's significant improvements for, towards transparency and more openness to Open Meetings Act and just perhaps city manager maybe giving a quick overview of some of these new features that we're going to have in here, because I, I think there's some significance to this as well. Just one last comment, too. I really don't like being put in that position where we don't have any other options, so I, you know, perhaps competition would be good, and, and, and that message to, to the folks would be, yeah, your, your prices are going up, and we're going to start looking for other solutions as well.
Well, the, the cost of, of replacing the system could be significant. This is simply the, the licensing agreement that we have with this. This includes the, the transparency suite, which allows us to ensure that the, that the meetings are streamed. It ensures that we have the ability of the public to go out onto the website and pull the information off for those items. We have our entire legislative system, which allows us to prepare the agenda items and put them on not only the iPad but on the web as well. It also includes, which is new for us this year, is the boards and commissions, which will allow us to manage not only the appointment process but the vacancies and the applications, and then utilizing it for our boards and commissions for their meeting agendas as well. So this is one of the features that we've added for this year.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as being able to search past information, is that one of the features that's in there for?
Fully, fully searchable, yes.
And for the council and for the public as well?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilman Kelly.
I do agree that we're in need of a system like Granicus. As I say, I really like this system, but I would ask, at what price point would we finally cry uncle? Sure, it's valuable. Sure, we, I use it, and, but, you know, there's, we have to reach a point of reasonableness with this vendor, and it, it may be absolutely justifiable. However, these increases are significant, and I think we should at least squawk rather than defend these very high increases. Thank you.
Councilman Montalongo.
Just one other comment here for the city manager. Perhaps a, a business case here, the amount of savings that we have, savings of people's time spent in putting all of this together would be helpful, too, to the council and seeing the, yes, there's a big price tag that goes along with this here, but if you actually peel it back and look at it, there's some savings to be gained by it as well. So just, just a thought here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? We have a motion and a second to approve. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We are at first readings. 20-025 is a request to concur with a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to receive and file a first reading review of an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code relating to parking in the warehouse-form district.
Councilman Grab, did you have something before we get a brief on this? Your light was on. I didn't know if you had a comment on this. Accidental? Okay. No problem. Director Black, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a cleanup item from a previous change that the council approved back in 2018. As you will recall, the, the vision for the Warehouse District is to continue to establish the historic pattern of buildings that are built right up to the property line. So in the case of the Warehouse District, that would be buildings built right up to the sidewalk. When the original ordinance for the Warehouse District was adopted, in order to accomplish that, there was a parking setback of 30 feet. So in other words, parking could not be any closer to the sidewalk than 30 feet. The goal was to have a building, a liner building, as it would be called, in front of the parking, with the parking behind it. That makes a great deal of sense to activate the, the sidewalk and have some interest for the pedestrians going up and down the sidewalk. However, development is incremental in nature, and there are situations where a surface parking lot is necessary. And so the change that the city council adopted in 2018 simply said that if, if it is a surface parking lot only, then the parking can be right up to the property line. There still needs to be a street wall, which in the Warehouse District is typically the wrought iron fence with the, the brick columns. But the parking can, can be right up to the sidewalk. If a structure is built, at that point, the parking on the ground level has to be back 30 feet. But parking on the second or, or higher levels can be right back out at the, at the property line. And there's a, an example image in the communication of a building where there's retail on the ground floor. Up above, there are windows, which are actually, that's just parking in there. So this is just simply a cleanup. It doesn't change anything in the ordinance. When the original revision was made in 2018, there were certain sections that we did not change as part of that. And that's what we are trying to do at this point.
Okay. Thank you for that summary. Are there any questions on this first reading? Seeing none, motion to receive and file, Councilman Ruck Regal, seconded by Councilmember Seer. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Twenty dash oh twenty-six is a request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff for a first reading review of an ordinance amending Appendix A, the Unified Development Code relating to truck parking.
Director Black.
Thank you, Mayor. This item before you is first reading this evening is designed to alleviate an issue that has become quite widespread in certain parts of town. And that's of larger trucks, what we would consider class, class-two vehicles. These are vehicles that are longer than 23 feet in length, more than eight feet in width, more than 10 feet in height. Typically, it's the semis and the large sort of delivery trucks. The challenge is that class-one vehicles, which are the smaller typical vehicles that all of us drive and the larger pickup trucks, they are legal to be parked in Peoria, in commercial districts, in residential neighborhoods, et cetera, et cetera. The larger class-two vehicles can be in the city for delivery and pickup purposes and for service purposes. Obviously, if a moving van parks in front of someone's house, they're providing a service to that house. What they cannot do is they cannot be stored overnight, parked overnight, or stored for a long period of time effectively anywhere in the city. And so the community development staff and the police department have spent a good amount of time moving these trucks along, basically saying to them, you cannot park here. And their question is, well, where can I park? And the answer, prior to the adoption of this, in a couple of weeks, is nowhere in Peoria. So what does this do? This basically says that a class-two vehicle can be parked overnight or for an extended period of time in the large-scale commercial districts. Those are the C2 districts, think of the, the big shopping centers, or the light industrial districts, the I1 districts, as special uses. So as a special use, as all of you know, if, if a large, if the owner of a large shopping center wanted to allow trucks to park overnight in their shopping center, they would have to come before the city council for approval to make that happen. The ordinance also recommends that overnight truck parking be permitted as a permitted use. So it doesn't come to council in the I2 and I3 industrial districts. These are the large-scale industrial districts that typically are going to have the most truck traffic anyway. This does not permit large truck parking in residential neighborhoods. It does not allow large truck parking in the smaller commercial areas. And it does not allow large truck parking without a special use in the larger commercial areas. So it is, while it, the goal is to alleviate a, a problem within the community, it does not open the door wide for semis to be parked in residential neighborhoods and driveways all over town. Be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Director Black on first reading? Councilman Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Black, will we have, or will we design special signage for those areas so people know where exactly they're allowed and where they're not allowed?
We can add that to the ordinance. At this point, the, the ordinance is silent in terms of any relationship between the property owner and the truck driver. You know, if, if they, if that's a, a payment system, that's fine. In terms of the parking lot itself, it would have to be maintained, as it has to be right now under city code. But we can certainly add a requirement that some type of directional signs be placed on these parking lots to delineate where this truck parking is.
Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director, did you say that if the shopping mall wants to have a semi parked on their property overnight, that they need to come to the city council to get approval for that?
Only in the situation where the truck is not at that particular location for a business reason. So if, if a truck arrives at four o'clock in the afternoon to make a delivery and sits overnight because that's where the delivery is, or in, in some cases, with some of the larger shops in town, you'll have semis that are backed up to loading docks. And they can sit there for as long as they want because they're transacting a business with that, with that particular company that's located there. This is situations where it's a over-the-road truck driver who's making deliveries during the week, comes home to Peoria on the weekend, can't park the semi in front of his house in a residential neighborhood, but has to put the semi somewhere. And so this, this is more of a, a truck stop, remote parking type situation rather than someone transacting business.
If a trucker, an over-the-road truck driver got caught up in some other state and got here after the mall closed, and it's midnight and the stores are closed, he has to be there, it, it would be okay. We wouldn't be ticketing that person.
Well, I'm, I'm not going to speak for, for the police department, but I will not be out at midnight ticketing trucks in shopping mall parking lots.
Well, our police department don't ticket people for the most part anyway, so I'm sure that wouldn't be a problem. But, and, and your department folks are already gone, or I should say, public works folks are already gone. So the question still remains, if a trucker gets there at midnight and has to wait till the store's open the next day, it's okay for them to be there?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director, yeah, so like, one of the big complaints that I get are these semis that are parking in a lot of different locations, parking lots when they can. So thank you for bringing this forward, helping us find a solution to, to that problem. So we, one of the things I wanted to know, can you give some examples of these large-scale, the C2s, I guess I, off the top of my head, I'm, I'm not too familiar with. Of course, I'm guessing Northwoods Mall, but I'm not too sure which other ones. And I would be like interested in like maybe the Kroger on Sterling or that Big Lots on Sterling as well. Is that, is that zoned appropriate?
Yep, yep. You, you, I think the Big Lots, actually, I think is C1. But the Sterling Bazaar is C2, Northwoods Mall, Westlake, Big Hollow Shopping Center, Willinole Shopping Center, Grand Prairie Shopping Center, North Point Shopping Center on Knoxville. And then there, there are probably some others sprinkled around. But it's, it's typically the commercial shopping areas with the largest of the large parking lots.
And just to guess, another thing for consideration is maybe the number of semis that could park in, in a location as well. I'm sure this will probably turn into a maybe money-making thing here for some of those locations and, you know, how many is, too many for, for an area? But just, just to give that some thought here. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of questions for you, Director Black. Can you, I guess my concern is, I understand the need in that we've got to figure out a way to allow semi trucks and bigger trucks to have a place to go. But my concern is, I guess I want to figure out a way that we can make sure that these parking lots, like the one at Northwoods Mall, don't just become, if we allow the special use, then can a semi, semi go there at any time? And is, can we add a limit to the amount of trucks that they can have? Can we, I can't, can you just help with that a little bit?
Sure. In response to that question, and also the question from Councilman Montalongo, as you know, a special use can be conditioned by the city council. So if, depending upon the circumstance that comes before you, the size of the parking lot, the location of the parking lot, then the city council would be well within its authority to say, we will approve this location, but there can only be a maximum of X number of trucks. And none of them can be stored there for more than 72 hours or whatever the standards are. You could say there need to be additional lights put into the parking lot, or, you know, an emergency call box, or, or something that would address concerns that you would have with that particular, with the intensity of that particular use at that particular location.
Can, as a follow-up, can we limit location at a particular site of where it's allowed through special use?
Yes, in, in the parking lot. My assumption is that if any of the, if any of the owners of the large-scale commercial areas in town are interested in this, they're, they're probably going to push these areas as far to the exterior of the parking lot as possible because they don't want their typical customers not to be able to find parking. Always listening. So, but, but yes, the, the answer is yes, that the council could restrict both the number of trucks and the size of the area and the location of the area, just like any other site plan that comes before you as part of the special use process.
What about time of day? Can we do that?
Yeah, I mean, I suppose you, you could say that the trucks can be stored overnight, but not during the day. They have to be gone by eight or nine o'clock in the morning, with maybe the exception of weekends where they, you know, they can sit there Saturday and Sunday, but they need to be gone by Monday at 9:00 a.m. I mean, all of that is, is within the realm of what the council can condition in any special use.
As another follow-up, do you know how many trucks? Do you have any idea how many this is going to be for ballpark?
There are, I would say it's in the dozens, if not more. I think there are trucks that are parked, you know, I, I see them as I drive around town just because I notice that type of thing. But, you know, they're parked in the, the parking lots of closed gas stations, or they're parked off to the side on the interstate, or they're parked somewhere else. It's not, you know, they're, they're generally not congregating in one location, although we have had some flare-ups in, in different parts of town. But I'm, I'm, I'm thinking probably several dozen at any one time.
And one more follow-up, did you consider just allowing it in industrial, not in commercial?
We, we did. And, you know, the, the path of least resistance for this is still the heavy industrial, the I2 and I3 districts. Because as a permitted use, the property owner doesn't have to come to the city council. They can simply say, they can make it known to the community that, that drives over-the-road trucks that this area is available for parking. But most of those areas are not very central to the city. And what we were finding is that in most cases, these are truck drivers who live in Peoria. And although they can't park their truck right beside their house, they like to have their truck relatively close to where their house is. And so I think having that opportunity for additional areas using the commercial districts is, is, should help. But we'll, you know, if this passes, we'll know more in a year, and we can make any amendments as necessary.
Is this a typical use in other cities that is permissible or with a special use in commercial areas?
It's not unique. I don't know if I would call it typical. What is, is somewhat unique about Peoria is that we don't have a, not to use the word typical again, but a, a truck stop that you would see in a lot of communities somewhere near, where there's a large facility where trucks can pull in, they can get their gas there, they can spend the night there, that, that just simply does not exist. And so that's kind of the missing component. And I'm, I'm quite sure that if someone, if a developer came along and built such a thing, it would attract all of, all of this business. So perhaps this will be an interim step before someone decides to, to develop something like that. But at this point, we just need something to resolve the pressure on a lot of these smaller commercial areas where the trucks are parking.
Okay, thank you.
I have Councilman Kelly next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director Black, this ordinance does not include the trailer alone. Is that correct?
It does not exclude it.
Well, I, I couldn't find it exactly. I thought it mentions truck all the time rather than, anyway. I'm, I think we're aware that there have been some places in town where trailers, lots of trailers have been stored without trucks. Was this considered in your discussions?
We would, per the ordinance, we would consider a, a trailer that was longer than 23 feet to be a class-two vehicle. And so this ordinance permits class-two vehicles to be parked. So, so it would allow a trailer without the, the tractor attached to it to be, to be parked.
Thank you.
I have Councilman Graeb next.
Manager, you, you have another great goal ahead, and that's to attract a Love's gas station somewhere close to the city of Peoria. So there'll, there'll be a wonderful place for the truckers to go and get a shower and all kinds of wonderful merchandise will be sold. Seriously, city council members, this has been a big problem. In my district alone, and I see the superintendent of Public Works, superintendent of Police, director of Community Development here, in my district alone, which is roughly the heart of the city, I've had at least 15 complaints from neighborhood associations about semi-tractor trailer trucks being parked in residential areas where they really do not belong. What this is an attempt to do, and it's a first reading and properly so, is to not be anti-business and to accommodate our truckers who take lots of goods to market and add to our economic vibrancy. So this is an attempt to balance the needs of the residential areas with the needs of business. And Director Black, I think you're off to a great start here. And the questions were all very good, and I look forward to approving this soon. Thank you, Mayor.
We'll make that a motion to receive and file. We, I, we still have a question or two here. Motion to receive and file, seconded by Councilmember Moore, and then I have Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just two last questions. The Southern Gate
The southern gateway is steep and industrial, I-1, I-2, and this ordinance would direct a lot of that parking to that area, in my opinion. So if a person owns a property there that's vacant, let's say vacant space, could they then rent parking, overnight parking space to people, to truck drivers who need to leave their vehicle because they live in Peoria but they need to leave it somewhere? Is that a potential? And if it is, have we considered how that would be managed?
So the answer is perhaps. So it's, if the property is I-2 and I-3, and when I bring this item back, I can bring a series of maps that show where the C-2, I-1, I-2, I-3 parcels are in town, just so there's a clear visual of where this could happen. If the property is zoned I-2 or I-3, then with the proposal, then the property owner could make it available for truck parking without having to come to the city council. They would have to meet all of the typical parking standards that exist, so it has to be a paved surface, so it can't just be someone with a vacant lot with mud and dirt on it, and now we've got trucks on it. So it would have to be a paved surface, and it can't create a traffic issue in terms of any sightline issues with cars trying to turn and a truck parked there. So I-2 and I-3, yes, they could do that. With the I-1 properties in the southern gateway area and then also throughout the city, they would have to come to the city council for a special use, and at that point, the council would have the ability to condition that special use depending upon the environment. But I can certainly share the zoning maps of these districts with the city council right away so that you have an opportunity to see where these different areas are well in advance of this item coming back to you in a couple of weeks.
Thank you. I would like for us to be proactive in the event that that example that I provided comes to us, because I believe it will, and since this is not typical parking, it's not cars or SUVs or pickup trucks, that we start looking at what that might, what the requirements might be for that property. And having said that, I'm wondering how many times we're going to see special uses come to the city council for parking, truck parking, and wondered if it was considered or is it permissible with some guidance that this be an administrative process?
I would be more than happy to bring back in a couple of weeks a couple of alternatives. One that allows for more permitted uses, so administrative review without council review, but with a series of conditions that would be required upon that use, and then this current one, which requires the council to weigh in and is really silent on conditions. So I'm happy to bring back a couple of options for the council to consider.
I think that would be a good idea because I don't know, we're dealing with so many concerns here around the council, and I'm not sure of judging whether someone should be allowed to park rises to the level of coming to the council when we have talented people like yourself that could make that decision with some guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure exactly how the protocol works between, in this case, Community Development and Police Department when we put a new, or when we're going to put a new ordinance in place, but it might be helpful when we do get to the point where we get a finished product here to make sure that Police Department's aware of any changes. What I'm anticipating is going up to some truck owner and giving them a ticket, and they're going to say, "Well, where can I park?" It would be helpful, besides saying, "It's not my problem," not that they'd say that, I'm just, you know, to at least make sure that we are able to direct them to a location that would be appropriate. I'm not seeing any additional lights. We do have a motion in a second to receive and file. Please cast your ballots.
The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty dash oh twenty-seven is a request to adopt an ordinance to vacate 3,310 square feet of an area on the south side of the intersection of West Wilhelm Road and North Hunter's Trail Court to outlaw, outlot B in Hunter's Trail Estate subdivision as outlined.
Councilmember Seer, or Ruckregel.
Yes, this is a situation where, I'm actually going to break this into two steps. One is to suspend the normal rules, make a motion to suspend the normal rules so that we can go ahead and move for adoption on this tonight. This is classified into the first readings, and I think traditionally we would have put this in on the traditional agenda. So I'd make a motion to suspend traditional rules and be able to consider this for adoption tonight.
And that was seconded by Councilmember Seer, and I think we were just going to ask Corporation Council for a quick explanation on that.
Councilwoman is correct that you need a motion to suspend the rules to pass the vacation on the first reading.
Okay. So we have a motion to suspend the rules, so we can vote on this this evening. A motion in a second. Seeing no discussion, please cast your ballots. That motion passes, and Councilman Ruckregel.
And I would make a motion to adopt as requested in the outline for twenty dash oh two seven.
Okay, motion to approve, seconded by Councilman Ruckregel. Is there discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Regular Business, twenty dash oh twenty-eight is a request to amend the guidelines of the East Village Tiff Housing Program to allow the participation of non-owner occupied properties.
Councilman Regenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would ask for this to be deferred till our first meeting in March.
Okay, motion to defer, seconded by Councilmember Grab. Discussion on the deferral. Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty dash oh twenty-nine is a request to concur with recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, Transportation Commission, and staff to approve a resolution amending the comprehensive plan to include a revised thoroughfare plan and map. And on your desk is a handout on yellow with a replacement resolution, the Transportation Commission minutes, and there is an enlarged map that's folded so that you can easily read it.
Do we want to get a motion on the floor here before we start things? Motion. We want to have a discussion before we have a motion. Okay, looks like, Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to recommend that we probably have that discussion here first before making a motion.
We can do that.
All right. Fill in for Ross, who stepped out for a minute. This is an update to the comprehensive plan and also the thoroughfare plan, which hasn't been updated since 2001. It's also taking into account our complete streets theory and the adopted ordinance for complete streets to give us legislative authority to maybe put properties on road diets, add multimodal processes for different roads throughout the city, but also to accommodate the existing IDOT designations to bring closer terminology between the two, and also for future roads into account and provide for future development through the city of Peoria. But I'd also defer to Director Black, who has other options to provide you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Josh. So this is an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan, as you know, is the long-range strategic planning document for the city of Peoria. A transportation element has been part of comprehensive plans since the initial adopted comprehensive plan by the city of Peoria in 1937. So this is nothing new. As Josh indicated, it's been 19 years since the thoroughfare plan has been updated, and over those past two decades, the whole concept of transportation has really changed. It's no longer just about motorized vehicles. It's about pedestrians, bicyclists, perhaps scooters, and other ways of moving around town. There's also a recognition now of the significant ongoing cost associated with infrastructure, both a capital standpoint, filling potholes, building roads, and then an operational standpoint, the number of lane miles that have to be plowed, that have to be cleaned, that have to be striped every year. There's also an understanding that perhaps didn't exist 20 years ago in terms of the role that infrastructure plays in the overall stormwater situation. It's an awful lot of impervious surface. There's been an increase in public transit use over the last two decades, and there's been a decrease in private vehicle use over the same time period. And because this is a future-looking document, it also tries to take into consideration the trends that are moving towards more shared rides, whether it's Uber or Lyft, and perhaps eventually some type of autonomous transportation. So beyond that, as Josh indicated, the map has designations or classifications of all of the major streets in Peoria. These are the classifications directly from IDOT. So effectively, if you went to the IDOT, if you went to IDOT's webpage and you looked at their road classification map, you would see the same data as is on this particular map. City staff does believe that some of these streets are misclassified because of their use in Peoria, and as part of this, after adoption, we would work with IDOT to petition them to reclassify some streets. Some of them, for example, Perry and Glendale on the near north side are classified as major collectors. We believe they should be local streets. They function as local streets, they no longer function as major collectors. There are sections of Martin Luther King Drive from Union Hill to, well, for the one-way section of Martin Luther King Drive that is classified as a minor collector that really should be a local street. It's too narrow to be, to meet the classification of a minor collector. Moss Avenue is classified as a major collector. We believe that should be a local street because the speed, the designated speed on major collectors is far in advance of what should be acceptable on Moss Avenue. And then Sterling from I-74 to US-150 should in fact be upclassified to a principal as opposed to a minor. So these are all the steps that we would take with IDOT after this plan is adopted. If IDOT agrees to these changes, then the map itself would be amended. The thoroughfare plan and map identifies several future roadways. You know, as I said, this is a future-looking document, including the extended Pioneer Parkway, which would go through Growth Cell 2 into Growth Cell 3. It anticipates a street network in Growth Cell 2, which is that area inside the Route 6 curve near the Super Walmart and Menards out off of Allen Road, and then it also anticipates additional east-west connectors in the Growth Cell 3 area where Louisville Slugger and OSF Center for Health exists. The plan further contemplates some future changes to the transportation system, including the elimination of Fulton Plaza as a single-use block. So whether it becomes some type of shared street or goes back to a regular street with wider sidewalks, I think that is up in the air at this point, but it anticipates that Fulton would not continue to be just a pedestrian way. It anticipates the conversion of several one-way systems in Peoria back to their original two-way design, and the adoption of a Complete Streets manual, which would be a companion piece to the complete street policy that the council has already adopted. What the thoroughfare plan is not, just to make it clear, is it is not an engineering document that requires the reconstruction of roads all over town. So if you look at a road on the map and then you go to that classification, it does not mean that that road will all of a sudden become changed to that classification. So it's not an engineering document. It's a starting point if there was a discussion about the reconstruction or the new construction of a roadway. It's also not a funding plan for future projects. So it's not a plan that says if such-and-such a road should be three lanes and currently it's four lanes, then automatically this will show up in the CIP in out years. So it's not a funding plan, and it is not a plan to either eliminate or unnecessarily restrict motorized vehicles or any type of vehicles within town. It's a future planning document that's trying to take into consideration the changes in transportation that have happened over the last 20 years and that we anticipate going forward. So with that, I would just like to recognize that the grant fund to put all of this together came from Tri-County Regional Planning Commission. Hanson Professional Services provided all of the technical assistance, and we had public comment on this, and finally, both the city's Planning and Zoning Commission and Transportation Commission voted to recommend approval of this document. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Black, and I appreciate the thorough explanation that you gave in terms of this being a planning document. I think we touched on it briefly at the last council meeting because there was some concern in the, out in the public after the transportation meeting that after the discussion on this plan, there was a thought that we were going to turn Sterling Avenue into a two-lane road, so obviously not the case, but so thanks for the explanation on that part and for people watching. Is this, has this map been put on the website yet? Do we have this uploaded? Or can, okay. So anybody that would like to see this plan can go to the website and see that. Thank you. Councilmember Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Director Black, for all the work that you've put on this. I think it shows very forward-thinking for the city. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution amending the comprehensive plan to include a revised thoroughfare plan and map and petition IDOT to reclassify Sterling Avenue from I-74 to US-150 from a minor arterial to a principal arterial.
Is that, is that something that we would anticipate doing in addition to the other streets you mentioned? Does it need to be a specific part of the motion as we approve the plan?
I don't see any harm in it being in the motion. Staff does intend to have conversations with IDOT on all of the streets that I mentioned, and these would have to come back to the city council before they were submitted to IDOT for a change anyway, but certainly there's no harm in the additional clarification.
Thank you. We have a motion, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Seer. Further discussion on this item. Councilman Kelly.
I don't really want to be a fly in the ointment, but on a personal basis, I'm not thrilled with some of the direction that we have taken with our streets in the last couple of decades, and I, I would like to have a policy session on these ideas and see if the council is still in favor of this complete streets idea, how well the government is supporting this. is still in favor of this complete streets idea, how well the complete streets is doing, whether, I just think that it's a nice idea, but I don't, I don't know that it's bringing us much of anything, except a little bit more expense and a lot more engineering and that sort of thing, and making a lot of our major streets more difficult to transit. And the purpose of those streets is to move traffic, and we're doing all that we can to slow the traffic down, to cause traffic jams, and that sort of thing. Now, maybe that's what we want, but personally, I'd like to see a policy session on this so we can air these things out and, so I don't know what, how I'd do that parliamentarily at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Being, again, being as this is a comprehensive plan that doesn't actually specifically change anything, I don't, I don't see a harm in approving this plan. And then if we want to come back and revisit complete streets, I would say expand the memory on your phone because you're going to, you're going to have a lot of people that are interested in talking to you about that. But I think it's, would be a welcome conversation to have. I don't think that it has to be, that we have to put a hold on, on this work that's been done to have a, a general discussion on complete streets and other traffic issues. That would be my opinion.
Yes, my phone has already, I've already put in for more memory on this item, Mr. Chairman. My phone's been ringing quite a bit on this. I don't have a problem with that as long as we're, as long as there is a consensus within the council to proceed with such a discussion even after this is approved.
So, just not to go down the rabbit hole on a, on a policy session, it would probably be a good thing to do at the beginning of the year. The manager has probably a list of items that we have requested for policy sessions. It would be a good opportunity for us to review that list and prioritize that so when we come back with policy sessions this year. But I would certainly see that that would be one that would, would be on the list, if that's okay with you.
That would certainly be okay with me, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilwoman Moore next.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Director, do you anticipate after conferring with IDOT, if the proposed changes are made, will the city need to pick up any additional maintenance of those roads as a result of the change in status at all?
Councilwoman, that's one of the questions that we will have for IDOT in terms of the classifications. In some cases, the answer is, is maybe. A lot of these streets, they're not state routes, and so in terms of direct state funding or direct state responsibility, it would be, it would be the city anyway. But that's certainly a question that we will ask them because we don't want to, the comprehensive plan or the thoroughfare plan talks about trying to reduce the ongoing liability cost of infrastructure, so we don't want to inadvertently pick up additional cost going forward.
Thank you. Councilman Montalongo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have to agree with a lot of the comments that Councilman Kelly made here as well, but just, just want to ensure to both Public Works and Director Black that, you know, and I guess to us, to the community, that tonight's vote isn't giving the green light for changes to the road without city council approval. And that's, that's what we're, we're voting on here. So, but I can understand where some of the concerns, and I received quite a few phone calls too, just for example, with Forest Hill, a change that's, that's coming, and that might be happening without city council approval. So, the rumor that got out there on Sterling that it's going to three lanes was, I just couldn't believe how fast that rumor got started, how many people were talking about it. But, and I think that may have stemmed from Forest Hill. So, I can see where the thinking is, that road's going to be changed or proposed to change, it hasn't changed yet, and wasn't voted on by city council. So, for the rest of this year, definitely, and that's my opinion, this isn't a green light to allow any changes to happen without it coming before the council.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess just in response to the issue brought up by Councilman Kelly regarding the complete streets plan, it might be helpful, and I know this isn't fully under your purview, it might be Director of Public Works, which I know now we have a new person, so maybe it's under the city manager, to give us a brief kind of review of the history because we spent a lot of time researching, studying, developing the complete streets plan. I know Councilwoman Akison, who's no longer here, did a lot of research. We had, you know, speakers come in from different areas of the country. So, I think it might be helpful even for the new people on the council to have that history. And, because it's recent that we finally adopted the plan as well and what that plan is. Could we do that?
Maybe, maybe we could have that in form of, so they have a little time to actually, instead of doing it up...
Right, right.
You don't mean right now, right?
No.
Okay.
No.
Maybe do that in next meeting or so, just kind of an overview of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Grab.
Nothing that is being discussed tonight negates neighborhood or community feedback to the elected representatives. Nothing includes Forest Hill between Sterling and University. We have very, very assiduously, and I know I'm not the only district councilman who has done this, had colloquia, discussions with the people along the streets and in this community where change was recommended. And we're going to continue to do that. So, there's nothing here that conemulates an erosion of that. And I think at-large, Councilperson Jensen points out very clearly that there has been an intent for quite a period of time, going back, I believe, to 2010, to rebalance the equation between the automobile on the one hand and the pedestrian and the bicyclist on the other. And I will tell all of you this, this is crucially important in the densely populated parts of the city where the safety of schoolchildren and people should be paramount. In District 2, which is the heart of the city, we have one of the most densely populated zip codes in the state outside of Chicagoland. And I'm proud of the fact that in some of the areas where we have implemented the complete streets philosophy, we have not had people killed anymore in the middle of an intersection, and knock on wood, because it can happen no matter what. So, there was a reason for what we did. Councilor Jensen, you're right, we need to be reminded as to how we've gotten to this point, and those people who have schoolchildren, schools, densely populated neighborhoods need to realize that the safety of these constituents should be paramount in our minds. One of the single biggest complaints I get, and I'm speaking to all members of the council now, and all at-larges, is speeding, speeding automobiles in District 2, and safety. So, you know, if you're in a district where you think things are too heavily controlled and you want to really open things up, increase speed limits, et cetera, increase road capacity, go at it. But I'm not going to be part of it, telling you that all right now. And my constituents want safety first, and they expect it for our schoolchildren. And by the way, while we're talking about Sterling Road, we share that corridor, Councilman Montalongo, and I in no way, shape, or form am trying to affect any change on Sterling. But that area around the school, I sure as heck want to see some changes. Same thing over by Maude A. Sanders Primary School. No matter what we do to slow traffic down, they're still going past the school at 50 miles per hour. We had a fatal accident in front of the school not too many months ago. Good thing school wasn't in session. I hear from the administrations of schools, all kinds of schools, whether they are parochial or public. So, when we say a street, we may not want to include all of that street because that street pattern may change and should change depending on what the proximity is to schools, churches, et cetera. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Grab. I'm not seeing any additional lights on this. We do have a motion and a second for approval with the change in designation request. If there's no further discussion, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Twenty dash oh thirty is a request to concur with the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff to approve a resolution amending the official comprehensive plan by incorporating the Local Foods Local Places Plan.
Director Black.
Thank you, Mayor. This is another amendment to the city's comprehensive plan in terms of long-range strategic elements. It's been widely recognized now for a while that there is a direct impact between individual health outcomes and the built environment, which you were just discussing in terms of the thoroughfare plan, and then access and education about healthy, healthy foods and healthy eating. This came out of, this Local Foods Local Places Plan came out of a two-day workshop last year that was attended by more than 40 stakeholders, including a whole bunch of community members. It was coordinated by the city and the EDC, and it was sponsored by partners at the U.S. EPA, the U.S. Department of Agriculture, HUD, the Chicago Fed, and DCEO from, from the state. Right before the workshop, there was a pop-up demonstration event that was attended by, I think, almost 70 people in the building that the city owns on Southwest Adams, where it was a mock-up, if you will, of a food equity center that included health agencies that were there, a community center, a food hub drop-off, and, and a grocery store. So, it sort of tried to set the stage for what this could look like somewhere in, in town. By adopting this plan as part of the city's comprehensive plan, it simply makes it easier for city staff and our community partners to go out and try and find additional partners and additional funding to make this happen. It adds, although this is a wonderful plan, by having the city council adopt it and make it part of the city's long-range strategic plan, it gives it a little bit more heft in terms of being able to try and track down some implementation. The city continues to implement, to work towards implementation of the goals in, in this plan as part of the Building Healthy Communities Initiative. The other partners in that are the county, the health department, Peoria Public Schools, OSF, Unity Point, Heartland Clinic, the EDC, ICC, University of Illinois Extension Service, LISC, and multiple community members. So, there's a lot of people from a lot of different backgrounds that are all working in this same area. So, in addition to that, as you'll recall, the, the adoption a while back, not too long ago, of the South Village Plan and the MacArthur Corridor Plan, there's a lot of overlap and intersection between what this plan says and, and the, the goals that were found in that MacArthur Corridor Plan, which hopefully will, will make both of them more implementable. As part of this, just to let you know, there were, there were some farmers' markets that were scheduled in 2019 that were very well-attended at the old Aldi's on Western Avenue. We have a grant application in right now to continue those farmers' markets in 2020. And then the, the large community garden down at St. Anne's, the Garden of Hope that is sponsored by OSF and, and St. Anne's, will continue to expand in, in this year or two. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director, I appreciate you mentioning that corridor, the MacArthur Street Corridor Plan because if citizens, residents took an opportunity to look at online at the renderings, there is a designated space for a grocery store. So, we are thinking, as you say, future, that we hope to bring a grocery store to the MacArthur Avenue concept. But I would like for us as a city to, to spend a lot more time looking at not only the MacArthur Street Corridor concept, but trying to repurpose the, the building on, on Western that was Save-A-Lot and Alder before that, and even going back down to the, to the Southern Gateway where you have the old Adams Street Market, that building that's sitting large and sitting lonely and vacant. And perhaps maybe look at this in a different way. We're always looking at selling buildings in the aggregate, the one building. But perhaps we might have some success looking, breaking those things up in more of a, more of a condo style, if you will. So, for example, the, the building, Contemporary Art Center building, each floor has a different owner, and it's all under, in one building. So, perhaps we can utilize that, a similar concept with taking the, the Adams Street Market on, on the Southern Gateway, and that might make it more appetizing for retailers to come into the area if they know they're not taking on the whole project. If you recall, when we brought in Save-A-Lot, we had gone through every single grocery store concept in the region twice, and were turned down twice. And when we finally got Save-A-Lot to, to give us an opportunity, it wasn't the easiest thing to do. The staff member at the time, Dr. Leslie McKnight, really had to convince them that this was a worthy place to come into. And so, when we talk about grocery stores, I just want everybody to remember that all those major grocers out there have turned us down at least two times, some three times. But let's think beyond the major grocers to some, we have a group working with small-scale development. Maybe we've got some industrious individuals out there who, if we have some type of condo concept, would find it, would pencil out better, it would make more financial sense to come in. You, you talked about the, the St. Anne Market, the, the garden that they have there. We talk about the, the Well Farm on Elm. We could locally source those things and from local farmers so that at least the produce would be, we would be generating sales for those local farmers into these smaller-scale developments. And so, if we could take some time to look at this a little differently and stop thinking that the big guys are going to save us, because they're not, and maybe reach out to some of the smaller individuals who, who would be willing to take a chance if it's broken down a little better, I think we could do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this item? Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank staff for working on this and getting the grant through the EPA. Fighting for access to healthy food and fighting against food insecurity's been a big priority of mine. I was a board member, gifted in the moment when we helped spearhead the Mobile Food Van Program and the Agriculture Apprentice Program at the Wells Farms. So, this was a very, I participated, in fact, in the two-day workshop in May. And if you go through this, there, there's been a lot of work from all kinds of community stakeholders, as well as the staff that came down from the EPA. And there are a lot of action items in here already identified, like Director Black said, some of them are already underway, like the farmers' market that was held on the south side in the early fall. So, I, I think this is a great start. I hope we continue to make this a priority. Food insecurity is a big issue on the south side where we have a huge food desert, but it's also a big issue for a big part of our city. It's not just the south side, the east bluff, the near north side, the central bluff, even the west bluff, we don't have access to a grocery store. The nearest grocery store is, you know, across, I think, you know, just... The nearest grocery store is, you know, across, I think, you know, just on the other side of War Memorial. Um, so this is an issue for a lot of people in, in the, in the Peoria, so I hope we continue to make it a priority. Um, like Councilwoman Moore said, there are a lot of solutions other than just big-box grocery stores. Farmers markets, gardens, um, if we could have this food hub maybe on the south side that's identified in here as one of the goals, that would be great. So, keep up the good work, um, and I move to approve if it hasn't already been moved to approve.
Motion to approve, seconded by, uh, Councilmember Euler. Uh, any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
Twenty dash thirty-one is a request to adopt an ordinance amending the City of Peoria twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one biennial budget relating to the general fund budget for twenty twenty and the amount of thirty thousand dollars, the East Village to fund in the amount of five thousand dollars, and the Warehouse District to fund in the amount of five thousand dollars to fund administrative and startup costs to deliver the full-time presence of a nonprofit microloan and financial services organization, Justine Peterson.
Councilmember Rigenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Based on discussions that I know many of my colleagues and I have had with Assistant Manager Rattler, um, we would ask for a two-week deferral on this item.
Okay. Uh, motion for deferral, seconded by, uh, Councilmember Moore. Thank you. Uh, discussion on the deferral. Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk.
We're at unfinished business. Twenty dash oh oh nine is a request to adopt an ordinance establishing a residential parking permit program on the one hundred block of West Beverly Court, North Lynn Street West to the alley east of Knoxville Avenue.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Grab.
Move to approve.
Uh, seconded by Councilmember Moore. Discussion on this item? Councilman Grab. Any discussion?
No, no, no discussion.
Thank you. Uh, seeing no lights, we have a motion to approve. Uh, please cast your ballots. Uh, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We're, uh, is, if there's no further unfinished business.
Uh, do we have any additional unfinished business this evening, unfinished? Seeing none.
We're at new business.
Uh, new business, new business this evening. Councilman Kelly.
Uh, going back to our Granicus discussion, I would just like to urge, uh, my colleagues around the horseshoe, if they've not tried, uh, the, uh, software, uh, you might give it a shot. Save a whole lot of paper, uh, by, uh, having this, and you have a ready source of back information as far back as you wanna go. I'd highly recommend, uh, the use of this software rather than, uh, cutting down a bunch of trees. Thank you.
Any other, uh, new business this evening? New business? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Uh, we would be at citizens' opportunity to address the city council. I believe we have one card.
Okay. Citizens to address, uh, we just need your name for the record, please, and we have a, uh, five-minute speaking limit. Uh, Mr. Stephen Morris.
Good evening, honorable members of this council. Name is Steve Morris. I appreciate your time and your taking time to here tonight. I'm a Christian, a husband, a father of five, pastor of a small local Christian church, and above all, a concerned citizen of this city who truly desires the blessing, the prosperity of all of our people and institutions, as you do. In prior visits here back in 2019, I've come before this council asking for one or more of you to consider sponsoring an ordinance to establish Peoria as a sanctuary city for the unborn, and to stop the ongoing legalized murder of the unborn in our city. Such sanctuary cities are actually popping up over all the country. The list is growing longer day by day. As we commence the year 2020, our count, our country, state, our cities are more divided than ever before. This is not fundamentally a divide between Democrats, Republicans, black, white, rich, poor, male, female. It's rather a divide between those who understand that God himself and his eternal unchanging laws and his word are the true measure of good and evil, on the one hand, and those, on the other hand, who believe that mankind is the measure, who exalt the supposedly sovereign self-determination and self-will of each individual man in the state to become the supreme measure of good and evil. The result is that we now call true evil good and good evil. As the scriptures say, the fool has said in his heart, "There's no God." Yet I remind each of you today, hearing me, that you are here today precisely because you were not aborted. Your right to life was upheld by your mother so that you could be here serving today. If we want to protect kids on roads surrounding our schools, then it follows that we must protect them in the womb so that they will actually make it to school. The first thing you need to hear is that the unborn child is made in the image of God, and thus he or she, not it, has inalienable rights, including life and liberty, but none of us has any absolute liberty to take away somebody else's life and liberty in the name of our own. God has said unequivocally that he is the one who creates life in the womb. This is, in some ways, an inconvenient truth, but the reality is, is that it is a genocide, it is a Holocaust that is happening that is no less than what was happening in Germany or in Maoist China. Margaret Sanger, the founder of Planned Parenthood, was a proponent in, uh, of racial eugenics. That was the reason for it, and abortion disproportionately and radically decimates African-American children far more than any other population. The logic of an abortion must inevitably lead to other things as well, like euthanasia, where the elderly eventually become inconvenient truths also. And the will to power, the survival of the fittest, the law of the jungle is all that remains as previously civilized people descend in anarchy and ultimately dictatorship. Abortion, secondly, is murder. It's that simple. God has said that you shall not commit murder, and he has told us that, and he's warned us of those who know the righteous judgment of God, that those who practice such things deserve death, but we, who only, who continue to do the same and approve of those who practice them. I pray that that would not be our case here in our city. Your role as magistrates is to protect the unborn children in the womb. Bible tells us that governors are sent by God for the punishment of evil-doers and for the praise of those who do good, and this certainly includes protecting children inside the womb as well as those outside, rather than being arbitrary. And we will all, especially as magistrates, give answer to God. We will answer to him for how you handle your office and whether you do this. I want to urge you to remember, fourthly, that Roe versus Wade is, in fact, a problem. The necessity for legisl, lesser magistrates to ignore and defy an opinion from the Supreme Court that's not law is your duty. Our system of government, according to the Constitution, states that only Congress has the authority to make law. Roe versus Wade, therefore, is not a law. It was a federal ruling based on a false premise that unborn children are, quote, "potential human beings." It sounds very much like the Jim Crow laws in which African-Americans were voted two-thirds human beings, less than human beings. The overwhelming testimony of scripture and biological science states clearly that children, both in the womb as well as out, are in fact that, children. We are trying to avoid national judgment. I am urging you today to stand and do what you know is right, to honor your conscience, to stand boldly and to declare Peoria a sanctuary city for life, no matter what public opinion polls say, no matter what the constituency says, because ultimately, the only thing that we will all account for is what Almighty God says.
Any other citizens to address the council this evening? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
We have an executive session.
Uh, Council Peterson.
We have an executive session to discuss sixty-five ILCS one twenty-two C one, the performance of a specific employee, two C five, the purchase of real estate, and two C twenty-one, closed session minutes.
Uh, we have a motion to go into executive session. Councilman Euler, seconded by, uh, Councilmember Jensen. Please cast your ballots. The motion passes unanimously, and we have a motion to adjourn. Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Jensen, seconded by Councilman Shear. Please cast your ballots. That motion passes unanimously. We'd like to thank Kathy Reinerson and her listening audience at WCBU, as well as Cable Channel twenty-two, and this meeting is adjourned.